Good morning. It is Tuesday, August 24th, and this is the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting in which I'd like to call the order. Please stand if you are able and join us in stating the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There will be one change to today's agenda. Under Additional Items, number one, the discussion and consideration for the Ames Aquatic Center is going to be moved to a later date for discussion. With that, is there a motion to approve today's amended agenda? So, I'll second Basil, Edens, and I. It is approved. Next up is for public comment, number one, this is the comment period for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anyone would like to make a public comment, if you please come forward. Or if you're on Zoom, hit the raise hand function. Not seeing anyone at this particular time. Dan, if you'd like to.
Yeah, sure.
Sure, you have to come on, obviously, the owl can capture you.
Okay, good morning. I'm Dan Colehan with the Ames Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Commission. I'm pleased to introduce, well, maybe you did find the building. Steel Harder is our new Director of Community and Economic Development Outreach. He'll be leading our contractual obligation with you as the Board of Supervisors. Steel comes highly recommended to our organization. He had an internship with the City of Urbendale, an economic development internship. Story City, City Minister Mark Jackson had reached out indicating he knew Steel as well. So, it's the second day on the job. He beat me at the office both days. He was before 7:00 yesterday and again this morning. I think, like him, he's a delightfully young man, graduated from Iowa State University, and will be routinely attending your board meetings and connecting with you as elected officials on the work he's doing on our behalf, but ultimately on behalf of you as the Board of Supervisors. And so, again, I wanted to introduce him this morning, and I don't know where he is. I'm sure he's got a good reason, and maybe he got stuck with the detour. But I look forward to meeting him, and thank you for your ongoing support.
Sure, sure. Thank you. You're still here, Dan, and he comes in, just kind of wave at what he's coming in.
Well, thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else at this particular time? See, now we'll close the public comment time, and we'll move on to the presentation from the City of Maxwell, the 2021 Urban Renewal Area Program Application. And starting out with Leanne.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dan.
I just want to take a brief couple of minutes. Just, I did share a schedule that we're following for this fall's fiscal year 23 Urban Renewal Area Program. Today kicks off the presentations by the applicants. We did receive, Story County did receive three applications for funding from the City of Maxwell, the City of Collins, and the City of Rowland. So, this morning is Maxwell's opportunity to share the application with the board and ask the board to ask any questions for further clarifications. Then the next meeting, two meetings, will be Collins and Rowland. But then on September 7th is a consultation meeting, too, at 9:00 a.m. So, that is when all the affected tax entities are able to attend and have a discussion with the board as well. But I do have the schedule available, and in the next two weeks, this will be going online as well as the draft plan. So, I want to at least kick this off, so you understand the process, and then invite Steve Gast and Doug Miller. Are there any questions for me?
No, I appreciate that you laid this out. I like the color coding, too.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Supervisor Edens and Supervisor Basil.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too. We are here to answer questions, but before we answer questions, I'm sure you've read through the applications. I'll just briefly go through it. Hit some of the highlights. We've been working with the county and the property owner on this property for a little over, for almost five years now, trying to get to a point where the property could be developed. We've used the county's assistance in professional staff and helping organize, training the council, doing a number of activities, learning how to develop. We've worked with the landowner, who has these great ideas of developing, but the landowner is not a developer. He is just a property owner. And he's worked with realtors, he's worked with various other people, and we have finally gotten to a point where there is a developer from the Ankeny area who's willing to come up and try a development in Maxwell. The problem has always been, we do not have an established market for developable property. If a house is on for sale in Maxwell, it usually sells within the week. But those are existing houses and not new houses. And so, developers are a little bit shy about coming up and investing a few million dollars, not knowing whether there will be a return on their investment. The developer that we currently are talking with is ATI out of Ankeny. It is a firm which has lots of experience in residential development. And at the time we submitted this proposal, there was a plan to do 26 or 28 lots in about a little bit less than 12 acres of land in two phases. Since then, as the developer has been developing preliminary and final plans, sewer line connections and everything else, it has become obvious that it's going to have to be all done in one phase rather than two phases, because he needs the dirt from one side to be moved, which would have been in Phase Two, to be moved into the side, which was going to be Phase One, in order to help with having an adequate fall in the sewer lines. So, they are now looking at doing all of this in a single phase. Whether it's going to be exactly 28 lots, whether it's going to be 26 lots, is a function of the final design. But the plan still stays the same. The city is being asked to participate in the cost of the public improvements. Public improvements will be about $1.4 million, and we're being asked to contribute to about half that cost, which reduces the developer's risk and also reduces the cost of the individual lots that will be sold. Lots, the developers are willing to contract that the lots would be sold at $50,000 apiece rather than the $75,000 that would be required if they had to do the whole cost themselves. The, what does not change in this is that we would be asking the county to assist us in the city's share of the cost. If we pick up the entire cost ourselves, which we will do if the county does not participate, then we would be at 95% of our bonding capacity. We would establish a TIF district. Much of the cost for this would be paid for, for about, of the $700,000, a little bit less, about half of it would be paid by TIF revenue, and the other half would be paid out of the general obligation bond that we would have to issue in order to fund our share of the cost. We feel that this is worth the effort, and we'll proceed with this. But it will put us at the edge of our bonding capacity, which is why we are asking for assistance. It fits within the county's guidelines in that it is transportation infrastructure and housing development. And I know it's an unusual request. If funded through the county, what we don't know yet is whether or not the county would be doing the TIF district in Maxwell, whether it'd be a joint TIF district. I've talked to the bond council, and they have no concern either way. They'd say they'd be willing to work with the county on whatever makes sense and is legal. And we are not experts in development, so we would certainly be willing to take lead from the county in the most appropriate way of doing this. With that, I'll certainly entertain any questions you may have, myself or Doug. We're both council people. You may not be able to answer everything, but I'll certainly be able to take notes and get back to you.
Appreciate your presentation. Supervisor Basil, you want to start off? I've got some questions. If you want me to go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, I'm just looking, there are two phases, and I just have the number right in front of me. Across in there, it looks like 300,000 one year and 400,000 the next, if I'm correct. That's what I thought. So, you said the total was about $1.4 million, and you're asking for the county for assistance. Are you asking the county for that 700,000 or half of that particular portion? It's unclear based on your application and what you said, so that's why I'm seeking clarification.
We're asking the county to participate at the $700,000 level, which would eliminate our need to do a GO bond, which, if we do it, takes us to the 95% of our GO bond capacity.
Right.
We only have a little left, because we've spent a lot of money on our sewage treatment plant, just like every other small town is doing nowadays.
Right, right. No, I appreciate that. That's what I thought, but just how you stated it, I want to make sure I was clear on that. And then with these developments, and I'm trying to go back to kind of the housing study as well that was done. So, are you looking at these being more low, moderate? What type of price range do you know that these are looking to be in?
These will be in the range of $250,000, so it will not be low and moderate income housing. What we anticipate happening, and what has happened in the past when the last development we had is that people who are currently occupying larger, older homes in Maxwell may move out there, which will open up other houses, which will make some low and moderate income housing available. We know that if we do a TIF district, we have a low and moderate income requirement, where we would have to set aside money. And the council has talked about using some of that set aside money as a way to reduce the sewer and water bills for low and moderate income individuals within the town of Maxwell and other housing-related projects as required.
And it looks by the map that the housing district is within your city limits. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I did a question. You said, so the developer that you have coming in was assumed, sounds like it's going to assume more of the risk. So, are you looking? I guess I'm just trying to figure out, so are they going to be the ones that are kind of upfronting the funds? I know wanting stuff from the county or city or whatever, but then being paid as the lots are being sold?
They, they would be paid upon completion of the public improvements. They have an obligation, would have an obligation in the contract to complete 10 houses in eight years. And if they fail to complete 10 houses in eight years, they would be required to pay back $20,000 per house. So, there is a little bit of incentive for them to move the property once it's developed. I don't think that is a major incentive. I think that once they spend as a million-plus dollars and have lots for sale, they're going to be interested in moving those lots as quickly as possible. They are developers, and they're in the business of moving property.
Sure. And then, I guess, just based on your comment there, so eight houses in 10 years, but the total of potentially 28?
I think it was 10 houses in eight years.
Or 10 houses in eight years, sorry. You're right. That's how I did write that down correctly. You did mention the total would be, what, 26 or potentially 28 houses?
Yes.
Am I correct there? So, where does that fit in? If you've got 10 houses in eight years, is, what's the plan then?
Well, the hope is that all 28 houses would be developed within that 10 years.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Looking at a minimum of?
Of 10, of the 10. Gotcha, okay.
If they don't complete the 10, then they owe us $20,000 for each one, short of that fact. But as Steve referenced, I think that they're in the business of moving houses.
Sure.
They're going to get people in, and the domino theory then will impact our low and moderate income.
Right, okay, okay. So, they need to do at least 10 houses?
Minimum, yes.
With the goal of 28?
Correct.
To not get the penalization of the $20,000?
Right.
For household, then? Okay, okay.
And we've all seen that there are external factors, such as COVID, that creates a delay in delivery or increased costs, and all kinds of things that can happen in the development game that slows things down. But, which is why we didn't look for anything more than a guarantee of 10 houses in eight years. And that also allowed us to do some projections with our financial consultant to see what the impact on the city budget would be, because the revenue that's generated by the TIF district would not pay the total debt each year. We would still be trying to come up, we would still come up with up to $30,000 in some year, but mostly $10,000 to $15,000 out of our regular budget in order to satisfy the debt.
And your funding request that you have here is based on, with the hopes of building 28 homes?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. That's my question for right now. Do you expect any negative impact, though, of having to change it from two phases into one phase?
No, as a matter of fact, it's simplifying things a little bit, because in two phases, we would have had a short cul-de-sac that would have been built and then connecting, there would have been a dead-end water line. And the problems of having a cul-de-sac with no guarantee that the next phase would be coming in was a little worrying, at least to me. By turning it into a single phase, yes, we now have all the money due at once, but we also then have a circulation path for the roads. The water lines, the sewer line work out a little bit better. Works out better for the developer because of moving the dirt. So, it seemed to simplify things and create a guarantee that the entire development will get done.
I guess one of the questions I have is, what is your timeframe potentially?
Well, we will probably start construction. The developer will probably start construction this next spring. We will go into a contract with the developer late fall, early winter. If we have to set up a TIF district ourselves and do the bonds and all that stuff, that would be done, again, in the spring, so that when the bill comes due, the cash will be there sometime in early summer. What we want to do is have two or three houses constructed before old settlers next year, because old settlers brings in a couple thousand people into the community, and being able to see the houses, see the road, everything else, I think would be good for the community, and then we're off and running.
Any additional questions at this time?
Well, just, where are you at with the water and sewer upgrade or project? Is it, are you done with that?
Our sewage plant had to have, had to be upgraded to meet the discharge, higher discharge limits, or the lower discharge. And we will be done with that project in September. It'll be, well, right now it's being held up, because one of the things that was required was a cover for the lagoon. And the cover is on back order, like many things, due to COVID. But as soon as that comes in, then the project could be done. It may be October rather than September. And the DNR has approved the delay. The capacity is there, and the plan to handle 50-ish more houses. So, with our current infiltration, so we could do some things to expand that in the future, but it's enough to handle this development.
Great, great. I think other questions I have, I know Supervisor Merkin was unable to be here today, and she may have some questions. Since she'll soon listen to the meeting, the recording of the meeting, and may reach out with questions.
And if we move forward together, we are flexible in doing this over, as proposed, two years. Doing it over more than two years, whatever works out for the board. Because doing it together is going to be much easier for the city than doing it alone.
If it took longer, just so I understand how things work, would you still have to pick yourselves up to that 95%? Would you still have to do that route?
Well, that would depend upon how, what the county's contribution would look like. If we have to pay the contractor the $700,000 by summer, and would mean that we would go either do an obligation bond or use other cash reserves as a short-term loan. And if we did an obligation bond or other financing that could be paid off on shorter terms than a GO bond, then yeah, we could avoid going up to 95%, even stretching it out over more than two years. But yeah, that's something that I would want to have bond council and our financial advisor really helping us with.
Sure. Yeah, I just wasn't sure what that would look like.
Yeah. It seems to me to be a possibility. We would just be doing shorter-term debts while, if the county spread their payments out over longer periods of time. But that's still better than doing it ourselves.
Well, thank you both for being here today. As I said, we may have some additional questions that you'll call us to do with, and Supervisor Merkin may have some as well, because you've been avoidably not able to be here today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we both move upon, we have consideration of a proclamation recognizing August 31st as International Overdose Awareness Day. Supervisor Basil, would you like to join me in reading this?
Whereas International Overdose Awareness Day is recognized globally on August 20, 31st to raise awareness about the risks of overdosing, honor the special someone whose lives have been lost from overdosing, and acknowledge the grief by families, friends, and communities around the world. And whereas Overdose Awareness Day aims to publicly challenge the stigma associated with substance use disorders and overdosing. And whereas recent reports show that in 2020, over 92,000 lives were lost in the United States due to overdose, the most ever in a single year, and up to 30%, and up 30% from the 71,000 lives lost in 2019. The rise in overdose deaths in Iowa and our six-quartering states are similar, with 8,447 lives lost last year, up from 4,920 lives five years earlier. And whereas every person's life is valuable and every overdose death is preventable, it is imperative to recognize overdose as a social issue which impacts victims, their families, friends, and communities. And whereas Story County is calling on all communities, the state and the country, to support overdose prevention policies and projects, and end the stigma and silence surrounding substance abuse and overdose. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim August 31st, 2021, International Overdose Awareness Day.
Thank you. There are motion. I approve of proclamation. Second. Basil?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
I know the challenges that overdose does on a number of individuals, not just themselves, but their families, the impact, and seeing, from my work in the legislature, and seeing what we could do at the county level, city level, and actually national level. and seeing what we can do at the county level, city level and actually national level, whatever we can do to provide support programs because we need to treat the whole family, not just the individual.
Yeah, I think it's important to recognize that these are people. These are people with families. These are people who are daughters and sons and friends and brothers and sisters. So I think it's important to remember that human piece and that it impacts everyone, no matter where you're from or who you are, how much money you make. There is, there's an event this Saturday, an overdose awareness event this Saturday at 10 o'clock at Ada Hayden, just recognizing those who have been lost and supporting their families.
Thank you for sharing that. Next, we will move on to agency reports. We have primary health care's annual report. I'm not sure if Kelly is on or if someone from primary healthcare is on. Sure. Yes, I see it was Nathan. Good morning, Nathan. There, you should be on.
Good morning. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. So we do have the primary healthcare annual report, but if you'd like to highlight some areas?
Absolutely. So first of all, just want to thank you again for the funds that were contributed and helping to make the Story County Dental Clinic a success through primary healthcare. As you'll see from the agency report, we had 471 patients that we saw per unique visits between March 15th and July 31st. And of those 471 individual patients that we, that we served, almost all of them were uninsured or on some form of public option insurance, so Medicare, Medicaid or something like that. In addition, we served five veterans during that time. And overall, we saw 1,030 appointments in the last, in that four month period.
And was this for dental only?
This is correct. This is only dental visits.
How far out are you taking, making appointments? Is there a backlog?
There is. Typically, we only open up our schedule a few weeks at a time. I believe Haley may be on the call as well. She's actually the clinic administrator for the Ames Dental Clinic. But typically, we, in our dental clinics, we only open up our schedule a few weeks at a time to mitigate patient no-shows. And so there is definitely a waiting list for patients to get into the clinic.
And I, because I've been out there, you've got a great setup for your dental clinic. So how often is your dental clinic open? Every day? I just, I don't recall.
That's correct. Our dental clinic is open every day from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. It's the same hours as our medical clinic.
And if I recall too, when we were out there visiting, I know you were trying to look at, I think if you had patients in your medical clinic of being that kind of that holistic of looking what else they need, you know, do they need dental care and things? So what would be kind of the timeframe are you looking at if someone was seen in the medical clinic to then get them into the dental clinic? Is that really quick or is that still might be a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks out?
Haley, is that a question that you can answer?
Yeah, to speak back to the first question though about scheduling, all clinic administrators across PHC kind of agreed to open up the schedule farther than about the three weeks. So we are pretty booked out for new appointments. However, within PHC, that is the highest no-show rate of appointments. So we do kind of keep track of that in a way so that way we can fill those appointments back up if somebody doesn't show. With the integration of seeing medical and dental patients, typically I would say within a month they can get in, especially because if we have a patient that does not show up for their establishing appointment, we're keeping track of those medical patients that now want to be seen in the dental clinic. So that way we can give them a call as well to get them in an adequate time. Another part of that integration piece where we will be focusing on the integration of our OB services in dental to make sure that expecting mothers can get in within that same day, same week, or at least in the appropriate time that's recommended within their pregnancy to get a dental check as well if they don't have a dental provider.
So then are you able to take like emergency cases then as?
Yes, we have typically four limited same day appointments available within our schedule. However, if anybody's ever in extreme amount of pain, it's a child or an expecting mother, we kind of have the rule of thumb that we'll work them in no matter what. If some, if those, all four of those appointments fill up at 8:00 AM, if someone's adamant about getting in, we can also have them sit and wait in case if there's another cancellation to get them in. Because typically those same day appointments are limited appointments when people are in pain, don't necessarily take very long just because treatment typically ends up being like a tooth extraction, antibiotic, a referral somewhere else. So it's a pretty quick process.
I don't, I'm just, I'm glad that you're able to provide these services. I know they're incredibly important and healthcare and dental healthcare are one of the same things. So, so yeah, I'm grateful that you're able to provide those services there.
Yeah, Marissa had asked me to share a success story. So I guess just another thank you to you guys. Because of our dental clinic, one patient to highlight that I actually worked with last week. He has not been seen by medical or dental provider within about three to four years. He came in to see Dr. Posler. He wasn't on our waiting list very long. She had discovered kind of textbook to the T of mouth cancer. So that was caught early and we're working with him on transportation and referrals. He doesn't really have, he does have a little bit of a learning disability. So we've taken the time to kind of educate him. This is the process of what it's going to be, making sure he knows when he's coming back in for the rest of his treatment after he gets treated for the cancer that was discovered. So it has been a great help to our community.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your presentation. All right. Minutes, consideration of minutes. On second, April 5th. Aye. Kind of opposite to him, isn't it? Next, consideration of personnel action. Who would you consider of personnel action? Second, Basil?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Consent agenda. I am not either. Second, Basil?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Now we are down to the public hearing. First consideration of ordinance number 295 commending chapter 32 road identification address numbering system of Story County Board of Ordinances. Morning, Amelia and Marcus.
Good morning.
I have a presentation of this one. So you saw this a few weeks ago and since we published, made some changes. So all this is talking about those changes. And this would be your first consideration again. So our recommendation would be approval on first consideration. Have second consideration next week and Marcus is up to debut next week on. If there's any new comments and then typically wait third consideration after that. So, thanks. The changes we made since the last hearing when it was remanded back to staff. We added in design requirements for self division street name signs. So just making sure those can be used on look. We also clarified that only city after an annexation can request a road management without petition for property owners. Next slide. We did clarify that address markers cannot be moved without prior approval of the 911 board in that section that allows a property owner to go to the 911 board to request it. And then finally, we added in the language about we'll have voting precinct information when we send out letters of notification about annexations and we ran that by Lucy. So those are all the changes since last time. Any questions we can answer?
No, no. Yeah, I appreciate you listening to what we, our projections and taking it back and doing revision.
Yeah, it was helpful. I'm happy with that and thought actually, yeah. All right. Oh, there's a public hearing. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, and now I will open the public hearing for ordinance number 295. And if there is anyone who'd like to make comments, you're unmuted. Please hit the raise more function so that we can, sure we unmute you or if you're in the public media, come on forward. Wait a few seconds. Star nine for zoom. Of course, a little both of the public hearing. Now, any further discussion? Okay. I would move approval of ordinance 295 commending chapter 32 road identification address numbering system of Story County Board of Ordinances on first consideration and set second consideration for Tuesday, August 1st, 2021. Second. Basil?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Now we'll move on to the second consideration of inspection services for the proposed Heartland freeway pipeline Midwest Carbon Express pipeline project.
Hi.
Morning, how are you guys?
Good morning.
My name is Evan Del Bell. I'm a civil engineer with ISG and here to talk about county inspection for the two pipelines. Really hoping that this is more of a dialogue that I can answer questions that you guys have, but I appreciate your time and finding it, coming here and talk. I'll give you a little bit of an overview as to what the projects are, as much as I know about them. A little bit about what the county inspection is and like I said, any questions you guys have, I'd be happy to answer them. So today, there are two proposed carbon dioxide pipelines through Story County. One is the Midwest town, Midwest Carbon Express that is being done by Summit Carbon Solutions. The other is the Heartland system line that's being done by Navigator CO2. I don't have any information on the location or the size of those lines, but liquefied carbon dioxide is considered a hazardous liquid in the state of Iowa. And as such, it is open to the 479B and chapter nine requirements, which puts a responsibility on your board to provide county inspection for certain construction activities of those lines through agricultural areas. We did similar work for this county on Dakota Access Pipeline that came through a few years ago. So as information about this came available, I contacted Lucy Markkinen there and gave me about doing the same work for you guys now. I understand this board has changed over since that. So again, any question you have about the process and what your responsibilities are and what our inspection program is, happy to answer those.
I guess my one question, I appreciate you giving that time and being here today is just the timing. I know that there is public meeting or September 13th.
16th, I think, in Story County.
To be, to be the second, I might have dinner ring for me. So I'm just assuming that once that we have that particular meeting, we learn more at the extent there and would you learn more than what your involvement might be or potentially maybe?
Yes, I mean, I would hope that we get more information on some of the particulars with the actual pipeline itself. So construction is set to be, from what I'm told, 18 to 24 months out. And it's important to remember that I don't, I have no affiliation with the pipeline. Their, their, permitting all that's being done independent of anything that I'm here to talk about. But yeah, I hope that that public meeting provides some more context to their project itself. Going back to Dakota Access for a second, one of the lessons learned from that particular project is that the whole state was kind of playing catch up with the pipeline, trying to figure out what the rules are, what the requirements are, what the responsibilities for the county is. And because there was a lot of uncertainty around that, most counties, I actually say all counties kind of held off on making any decisions about what they were going to do until they absolutely had to. And what that did is it put landowners and county inspection at kind of a, behind the eight ball, so to speak. We're trying to, we're trying to play catch up and get out there, get our staffing up to speed, get an understanding of the project impacts, coordinate with landowners the best that we can. So looking at this project, having, you know, a year and a half to two years before construction starts, my recommendation to counties is take advantage of that time. Get your county inspection staff in place. Give them an opportunity to meet with counties, meet with your landowners. Try to coordinate as much information as possible between the landowner and the pipeline so that there are less unknowns when you get into that. Today, the only thing that's set is that September public meeting. I think there's value in having a county inspection representative there for the county. I don't know if you're planning on attending that meeting, but if you are, if a landowner stands up and asks you what you're doing to help it, I think, I think there's value in saying, we knew about the project, we're proactive. This is the, this is the firm we hired to do that work. They're here. We'd encourage you to coordinate with them, stay with them, any concerns that you have. And that really kicks it off for us.
So could you explain a little bit if we would move forward with contracting, kind of what, as you said, they're not going to or what the hell we're doing in the first few months potentially?
Yeah.
So explain a little bit, like detail, your role in that meantime.
In that interim?
That's the if, if we move forward.
Yeah. So first of all, what we're looking at this point is a letter of intent only. So, and we're looking for that in order to help us with staffing protection. So as we, as we get ready for this project, there are 32 counties impacted by this project. If you reference back to Dakota Access 18. So it's a significantly larger geography that this is impacting. So staffing, staffing starts really now getting, getting in contact with inspectors, getting this on their radar and trying to make sure that we're coordinated in the scheduling on, on having adequate staff for that. So that's part of what we would be doing in this interim. More importantly though, it is starting to open up lines of communication with landowners to help us understand what they have in their, in their parcels, whether that's underground drain tile, conservation efforts that they've done out there, considerations for future improvements. All of that information can be communicated to us, which ultimately gets communicated to the pipeline. It just helps, like I said, mitigate the unknowns. It helps the pipeline as they're doing their design, design for the ultimate condition as opposed to going in blind and needing to make adjustments while it's live. Again, it's just, it's just taking that all the time that we have at this point. So you also sort of were alluding to what we would be doing from a, from a cost standpoint for this as well. Idaho code puts 100% of the county inspection fee responsibility onto the pipeline. So ISG would, if you were to hire us, would invoice our work to So ISG would, if you were to hire us, would invoice our work to Story County. Story County would then send that invoice off to the pipeline. Once the pipeline pays Story County, you would pay ISG. So you function as a, as a pass rate agent in this. I can assure you that at no point will the county be responsible for a penny of this work. Anything that is done outside of the mandated inspection, ISG would be doing at risk. So that would be on us to coordinate that with the pipeline, make sure that they understand what we're doing. They would be responsible for paying that. So there's the communication, the coordination that's on ISG. We would be communicating that with you as to what we've agreed to. But that again is important, that's being done here before, before the inspection takes off.
So if for some reason there were several meetings and then there was a decision not to move forward by the company's running pipeline. They would be on the hook for your time.
Either they would be on the hook or we would just eat that cost. And so that's spelled out in that letter of intent at the bottom there of just saying, if this project doesn't go forward for any, any reason. It, it just goes away. There's, there's no obligation on the county.
And so would, would your company be inspecting as the pipelines are being put in also, not just its front work, working with landowners, but as the work is being done?
Yeah, that, that's, that's what the code requires. So everything we've talked about now is again, sort of the lessons learned from the Dakota Access on where we can find added value to the inspection work. That I've had those conversations with the pipeline already. Like I said, there's, that's more being done at risk by us, but we think that we can show the value in that to the pipeline. All of the inspection work, that's what's spelled out by code. So chapter four seventy nine B and chapter nine of the Iowa code. Says that for certain construction activities, you have to have a county inspector there. And that's starting with right away staking, moving into topsoil stripping, clearing, rubbing, trenching impacts the drain tile, both, both the cutting. And the temporary immediate repair goes backfilling that trench, ripping the sub soils, relaying the topsoil, getting that back to proper contour depth for the original. Site and then restoration of that, of that area to whatever the code requires in that. All of that requires inspection. So. ISG comes at this a little bit unique from, from other potential firms in the state, but these, these projects don't happen on a regular basis. No firm in Iowa is making their living on inspecting pipeline. They're just, they're too few and far between. So ISG, as we look at that, these are pipeline projects, they're not drainage projects, they happen to be done in agricultural areas. They happen to be impacting some drain tile, but they're not drain pile projects. There's, there's a unique element to it that is, that is, again, unique to the pipeline. So we hire experienced pipeline inspectors that do this work all over the country. And the reason we do that is if, in fact, in Dakota Access again. We had, we had work being done, inspection being done for about fourteen to sixteen hours a day, seven days a week, at times for, for months on end. And when things started to slow down, that meant that we went from seven days a week down to six days a week. Our inspectors bring their campers and put then, set them up at campground so that they are close to the, the grade where they're working. That's the expectation for the inspection. So our inspectors are only hired to do inspection for this project. They're not going to get called off to do a proposal, they're not going to get called off to do inspection on another project. They're not going to miss inspection because they were filling in for something else. This is what they're hired to do. On top of that, they're expected to be inspecting the specific element of the construction that they were hired to do. So if that's topsoil stripping, they're not going to get called off to go do drain tile inspection. The reason we find that's important is because as all this work is done subsurface, if you don't get eyes on it at the time, you're not going to know what's there. And your landowners are, have put in a lot of time, a lot of money into their fields. If in three, four, or five years from now, they're having issues with drain tile that they never had before. These inspection reports are just going to help them come to some solution with the pipeline. So we take it very seriously. We make sure we hire people that understand how these projects work and have a dedication throughout the duration.
You said there are thirty two counties impacted. You are, you are already giving letters of intent to other counties.
We have letters of intent from six of them to date. And the I U B, the Iowa Utilities Board approved this schedule that I passed on about ten days ago. And I'm, I'm assuming that there is going to be a lot more counties that sign up now. I'm on the board's supervisor meetings for like seventeen more counties in the next three weeks. Those meetings were set up before the utility board approval, but now there's, there's a specific timeframe that they need to make decisions if they want an inspector at that. So I'm guessing that that number will go up.
I was just gonna say, flood year and, and no year and, have any comments?
Yeah, I'd just comment that there's two main things that are important in my mind is one, for the consultant to have experience in pipeline inspection. And ISG did gain a lot of that with the last one, and there's not a lot of firms, like you mentioned, that do this work. So I'm comfortable with their experience they gained from the Dapple Pipeline. And there's also some benefit to having continuity between counties, and that's what kind of happened last time as well. We all kind of lined up. And use ISG so that they could just jump over the county boundaries without having to worry about it. That was beneficial as well. There's two other things I'd comment. All we've received so far at this point is a letter from Midwest Carbon Express Pipeline. And there's two pipelines on the agenda, the Heartland Greenway. We haven't heard about public meetings, anything for that at this point. So if the board did move forward, you'd have to decide if you do both or just the one that we've received a letter on at this point. My question for Evan is if the board approves a letter of intent, is that enough for you to attend the public meetings? I, I do see benefit in attending that public meeting. And then you come back later and we sign an official contract then?
Yes, yeah, like I said, the, the letter of intent is just trying to help us understand staffing, but it also, it also ties us to you guys. To, to start to do whatever we can for Story County. So yes, we would be at that meeting just based off of the letter of intent.
And your time, I'm just gonna go, any time associated with like attending meetings or whatever, again, goes built back to the pipeline, is that correct?
One hundred percent of everything associated with this project gets built back to the pipeline. I, I, we can put it in whatever you need, whatever form. Story County will never be responsible for a penny on this project.
I guess I'm, I'm kind of confused about, are we not required to do an RFP? For even though. You might be paid by the pipeline, it's, since it's coming through, we're hiring, we would be hiring whoever.
Yep.
The inspectors, so. Are we not required to issue an RFP for that?
Yes, we'd have, we'd have to talk to Ethan about that probably, but I do not recall doing one for the Dapple Pipeline. I, I don't think they're required for engineering and inspection services by Iowa law. But we'd probably double check with Ethan on that.
I can address that somewhat just because it's a question that's come up previously, is that design services generally are not required by RFP. Construction services are, but design services aren't. Also, I'm not entirely certain how you would RFP this because there's so much variability to how people come at the project. Number of inspectors, duration of inspectors, you'd be just shooting in the dark at this point. And county attorneys from other counties have determined that it has not been necessary. Take that for whatever it's worth. I'm not an attorney by any means, but that's my experience with it, it's, it's come to that conclusion.
Other questions, any additional comments, Darren, that you may have?
I'd just point out for the board's sake, this is simply to protect the private property owner's rights for their land restoration. The county will be involved with, this appears to go through multiple drainage districts, we'll have to get permits with them. And then road crossings, that's all still handled by the county. This service is just private property protection.
Any other questions that you have to, to circle time?
Their motion? Just trying to figure out how to say it. Move approval of. Signing the letter of intent. For those Heartland, are we doing the Heartland Greenway? Or just Midwest Carbon? Since we don't have.
Can I get just a touch of an update on that as well? Sorry, just to this, they're two entirely different projects. Two entirely different contractors are actually going in opposite directions within the state. One's going to North Dakota, one's going to Illinois. There is nothing official yet on the Heartland project, so Darren's absolutely right, they haven't seen anything. They're, they're further behind in their scheduling than Midwest, so there's no affiliation. If you feel comfortable with just the idea of using the inspection staff the same, again, it's no, it's no cost to you. If you want to hold off on that, we can wait until you have something official that it's, it's, it doesn't matter to me. I was just trying to knock out two birds with one stone while here, but it doesn't, it doesn't matter one bit.
Sure, sure. No, this, this is more about me making sure that I was making appropriate motion.
Yeah, gotcha, okay.
Right, and I did double check just, just for like the, like the Midwest Carbon. The meeting is September thirteenth.
September thirteenth, okay, gotcha.
I double, I double checked the email that came through. I just want to say that for folks that may be listening, that they, that they heard that.
Yeah, thanks. I would move approval of signing a letter of intent. For inspection services for the proposed Heartland Greenway system pipeline and the Midwest Carbon Express pipeline projects with ISG.
Seven. Any further discussion? Say so. Aye. Kevin? Aye. Motion approved. Thank you. I thank Darren for your comments as well.
Darren, can you just scan that in and send me the document when you get it? Because I think he has to sign it as well as a law form, so. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, next to move on, we've got the conservation quarterly report, and I see Mike Cox here. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning. I don't have a lot to add to what's in, in writing, so I'll keep your, your time here brief. We have been this summer. Exceptionally pleased to be able to have now a new and first watershed coordinator for Story County. So we're just, we're really pleased to have Sarah Carmichael on board. I hope some of you, I hope you've had a chance to meet her. Sarah comes to us from Iowa River's Revival, where she was the executive director there. Part of that, she worked for Iowa Department of Public Health for some time, so. Appreciate her for being here and, boy, she's just really taken the bull by the horns, showing a lot of initiative and really getting in and. Going to work on some projects, so it's a pleasure to have her with us. At many levels, so. And again, her office is in this building, so part of that is, is intentional with access to, to the board, access to other department heads and elected officials in this building, so. Please feel free to knock on her door and call her when you have questions. In addition, I guess you were, you know, the, the report summarizes a lot of what we've been doing. I'm gonna really leave that as stands and, and bring up the item that, that I have at the bottom of the report, and that is the. Iowa Association of County Conservation Board's annual conference that's coming up here, just in a matter of weeks now, in mid-September, so. We're just fortunate to be able to host that. We were on the schedule for last year, of course, COVID made different plans, and so now we're, we're back at it this year. We do have COVID mitigation plans in, in the queue for the conference, and so we'll be utilizing those. They'll have to do with everything from. Transportation, face coverings, face coverings are going to be required at the conference. And food, beverage services, all have COVID implications with them, I should say, mitigation strategies, so. As of right now, I think we're probably about two hundred and thirty people that will be in attendance. So if you are available to pop in for a little bit during that conference, that would be great. I'll send you the full program brochure once we have that finalized, which I expect here in a couple of days, we'll have the final version of that ready, so. With that, I guess I would just take any questions you may have.
I can't remember, have, have you hosted the conference before? Is this the first?
We have hosted it before, and I, I hesitate to try to quote a year, but it was in the nineties.
Okay.
I want to say early nineties or mid nineties, the last time we hosted it.
And you were supposed to hold, hold this last year, and it got rescheduled to this year.
Yes. And we're very, very thankful for, last year when we rescheduled it, of course, the, the association has several years of, of conferences lined up in the queue. And so last year, when we had to make the decision that we couldn't hold the conference, all of those years agreed to be bumped one year so that we could hold it this year. So Dubuque County is up next, they'll be in twenty two, and, and they were gracious enough to move theirs back so that we could still host one year. Appreciative for all those other counties.
I don't have any other, I mean, that was going to be the area that I have my questions on, so you answered my questions already. You know, I just think there's, there's something great that's been going on in the county. Appreciate all the work that you and your staff have been doing.
Yeah, and, and it's great, the increased use of the Heart of Iowa Trail on an access clearance later. Are you noticing any type of extra upkeep expenses with the additional use of the trails? I mean, is that going okay?
I would say right now, the answer is we really haven't, haven't seen a lot of added maintenance expenses on it. We are getting significantly more use. We do have trail counters out, and so we're getting, starting to get some of those. Counts, counts coming back, and so we're starting to be able to quantify that, the usage. That will show, continue to show, be important as we move forward for more grant applications on future paving work. We, we do have some grants moving forward. However, we, we did not get probably the largest grant that we requested to do the next phase. But, but we do have some moving forward and, you know, we'll continue the efforts. I know Collins is very interested, Maxwell is very interested. And, and so we'll continue to turn rocks over to try and find available grant funding for that.
Right, I don't have anything else. Well, the, the reopening celebration was wonderful. It was, it was, that was a really fun time.
Oh, good.
At Colo, yeah, in Colo.
Yeah. Yeah, good, good. We hope to be able to, to continue to do that. No plans have been formalized for next year, but. We hope to be able to continue to co-host, if you will, the Colo Crossroads event at Hickory Road Parks. It was, I think a good time was had by all.
Yeah, I mean, there was a good turnout of people.
Yeah.
And for that, the weather was nice, so.
Absolutely, it was gorgeous day.
Yeah.
We evaded the raindrops.
Educational experience, opportunities are, are flourishing too. I'm glad to see the, the work being done at the schools and.
And that's, as you well know, that's, takes a lot of coordination right now with, with all of the COVID procedures. So our staff has been very busy now, sked, meeting with all of the elementary schools and, and some others as well. of the elementary schools and some others as well, and getting the, essentially getting the full school year calendared out right now, so we're, we've been very busy with that.
That's great, we appreciate all the work you guys do, all of you. Very good.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, so we don't have any other reports, upcoming agenda items, the only thing I can say would be the one that got moved today, that will be, it's on, it's on a later date. With that, I'll open it up, public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. If anyone would like to make a public comment, if you're on Zoom, you can either use the raise hand function or * 9 to unmute yourself, and I'll wait a few seconds, because I know that sometimes technology is a little slow and it doesn't always allow you to do what you want to do. And I am not seeing anyone raising their hand or unmuting, so I will close public forum number two. Liaison assignments can be meaning updates from supervisors. I can just say that I will be attending the ISAT conference for the next three days, and then on Monday, for example, I have, or Monday, I have, next Monday, I have MICA board meeting.
I will also be at the conference the next three days, and then Saturday morning, I will be at the overdose awareness event, and then it looks like Tuesday morning, we have our animal control department recognition.
Great. All right, and if there is nothing else, then I'm going to adjourn, and I'll second. Beethold, aye. Evan, aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.